Pick up pretty good.
Yeah, he said Sean's in conference spot for me, so I'm not on it at all.
Like I said, we just needed to, and I have something to do minutes from. I'm gonna take the recorder over here for me, I can do it the. We have a CD player that we can record on, but we don't have anything over here. That's why I do departmental meetings too in case we have to go back to.
Do we need to have a tape? Do we need to have a tape?
I'll just, I'll just have it on.
I don't need, do we need to get one?
We don't need here that often really. We can put it on there, cause we can put it on a DVD there. So she's not Patty's driveway?
Looks like what?
She's okay for surgery. We're looking at maybe Friday, depending upon whether or not it gets approved by the insurance. Insurance has to go in first and get approved. Doctors like to get paid for some reason.
Lot of nerve.
And much as I feel culpable for being not salt on the ice at the end of the driveway, I ain't paying for that. I went down with more record now. Patty slipped on the ice at the end of the driveway on Tuesday, I think it was. And broke the head off of her radius on her right arm, no, her left arm. So, I thought it was just the carpal bones, bones that are in between, which are pretty easy to heal, but and she broke the whole head off of the radius, so.
Does she ring a guilt trip on you by then?
Not really. So, when they set it, they had to set her hand at an awkward angle. Well, it pinched that nerve that gives you carpal tunnel syndrome, it piece it, her fingers were all numb. So we had to go back in and get the soft caps cut off, so she could put that in it. And they, you know, but the problem with the angle they had to put it at, still doesn't straighten up the bone. So we had to go in and screw it in place. She's happy about it.
I bet she'll get lots of salt now, won't ya?
Yeah, I'm ready, I got four, four bags. But it's been too cold to salt.
Yeah.
So, let's call the meeting to order here, roll call. Melissa?
Here.
Michelle?
Yep.
Jill?
Here.
Lloyd?
Here.
Greg, here. All present, we have a forum. And it's pretty simple, we're here for a work meeting, and most of us, you'll be on you.
Alright. I did, you guys have all seen this, but just gave you, made some copies in case you guys wanted to scribble on it or look at it. I'm looking up on the board. We've got two of those here. Well, here we go. There you go. Take one off and pass it around, we'll make that easy. Alright, so, this is the plan that we developed last year, over the last year and a half or so, I guess. I just kinda wanted to, I guess, bring those up to speed that haven't been involved in that, wasn't involved in this previously. The first one that you have here just shows the location of the property. As most of you are probably aware, it's on the west side of County Route 12, on the north end of town, adjacent to Rolling Meadows Development. There's that light shaded area here next to the blue, this is all part of a preliminary plat area. So when Rolling Meadows, when this development, housing development down here, which goes up to the North Ridge line, when this was developed, this whole, one property owner, one developer owned this whole piece all the way up to the white and including the Rolling Meadows Parkside area here. And they had a preliminary plat laid out showing how this whole thing would be developed. And that's the, one of the first steps in the development process, is the preliminary plat, and then that's approved by the Planning Commission and Council. And then, that just basically lays up the groundwork or the roadmap for future development. Kinda gets everybody in agreement, the developer and city and everybody else on how, how it would be developed, but it doesn't actually subdivide the parcels. So that's, this area here is all preliminary plat, and well, since that time, the developer went bankrupt. The preliminary plat has expired, I believe, we've not, they haven't requested to renew it. They can request to renew it every so often, so it stays current, but they haven't done this. So, the preliminary plat is lax, so really any future development to the west can, can happen as proposed by, by a developer and then reviewed and approved by the Planning Commission Council. Just a little background there. And then, the blue area is the area that we've acquired for the regional park, currently owned by the city then at this time. The pink up on top is, is property that's owned by the school district, plans for a future middle school. And then, there's a piece of property in between owned by the, the Rudes, Richard Ellis Rude. So, the reason we did this, as part of the planning stage, was just to see the benefit by the location or proximity of the park to the school, future school site. We've had some discussions with the school on collaborating some efforts and stuff like that.
And I believe the Rudes have given us first, what's it called?
Right.
Option of first.
First refusal, I think it is.
Yes, so if they decide to sell, we would have first option, or we'd be able to make an offer to them, like a market value offer to buy if we wanted to, or at least get the trail like through there. So they have given us that, we've, we've got that from them.
We should pay them a small amount for it, so we would have a first rate on that. We, we also tried to do the same with the Herzog, Herzog rig?
Yep.
Property, the, the house right there, but we did not get a signed agreement signature, so. You know, that, that, just keep in mind, in the future, if he ever decides to sell, it might be a benefit to acquire that. But, we're designing around that right now, he sits up pretty high, so what we've done so far is design not assuming that we would, we would not take in that property.
Yeah, I've touched base with him, he's not, he's not amiable towards being annexed by the city or selling it this time, at least what I've heard on it. Talked with him on that one. He's very interested in what the park, what happens in the park, so.
So then this other one that we have here is, is the, I guess, concept layout, I'll call it, kind of a roadmap to how it can be developed. We went through, we did a survey of the, community-wide survey of what the needs and wants are of the community and reviewed that. We had an open house public meeting where we took comments from the public and had several park commission meetings, several city council meetings, and collaborated on what the needs and wishes and wants of everybody were, and this is what we came up with. Really no specific phasing plan has been developed at this time. That's kinda where, I guess that's kinda where we're at probably at this point, is, you know, sort of determining kinda where we wanna go from here. This, this concept plan has been approved by previous council and parks commission and such, and kind of a roadmap though. Further southwest corner here, I guess, this is where the existing baseball, there's a lift, first of all, City Lift Station right here, so this cannot be moved. This is permanent infrastructure that has to remain in place. Then there's a city, the, the small ball field that was constructed is right in the north of the station, Sean?
Close to, open to the west.
Right in this area here. This whole area is pretty flat right now, you know, cause it's kinda graded out, so not a ton of grading that needs to happen here. There would be some, but, you know, this is the flatter part of the site. As you go to the north, there's a lot of grade, a lot of grading, a lot of dirt that's gonna need to be moved to flatten this all out. What we've done right now is we've done basically a preliminary grading plan to determine how much soil would need to be moved, to come up with a preliminary, you know, kinda costs and such of what, what the grading would be. And we did a memo, a memo to the council back in August of last year. And based on that preliminary design, basically the cost just to move the dirt for the entire site is about four hundred thousand. So it's, it's a lot, it's a lot of cost. But you get into, you know, you get into the north here, and it's really difficult to do it piece by piece. It's, it's not gonna be really efficient, and so once you kinda get into developing this area up here, it's gonna be most efficient to, to grade at least the majority of it at one time. Basically, bringing a lot of dirt from here and bringing it down to this degree here.
Are we looking at Corps of Engineers or military engineers?
So I did look into that program a little bit, that grant program. There is a, a program available through the National Guard. It's called the Innovative Readiness Training Program. There is a specific program and application process. There's a deadline each year of May first, so there's a deadline of May first, two thousand and fifteen. And that is for Department of Defense fiscal year twenty seventeen. Which, the fiscal year is October twenty sixteen through September twenty. The, there's definitely some, probably some red tape to go through on a program like this. I did some checking throughout our company, emailed a number of different people in our company to see if anybody's used this program in the past. And nobody, nobody has had any specific experience with it. There was somebody that actually worked with up north, a technical college that did technical degree for, for heavy equipment operations, so they did something similar to this. One of the things about this program is, is they can't compete with the public market. And you have to prove, you actually have to advertise in the local paper and give every baseball contractors an opportunity to express any concerns that they have, that, that the Department of Defense is competing against private contractors. So that, that's one of the hurdles, and I, I don't really understand that completely, because, I mean, anything, anything that the Department of Defense does for a community would be able to be done by local contractors, so. I don't know if that's just a case of, nobody's just against it, so anyhow, that, that's, that's a, that's a potential hurdle or potential issue there. And they ran into the same issue with this community school too. As soon as they heard there was some objection by local contractors, and as soon as there was objection, basically they backed out. Backed away.
I wonder if it might be different based on the fact that it's a government property and not a private property too?
Potentially, the one that we, specific one that was for this technical college was a public property as well.
So do we just have to prove that we can't afford the private contractor?
Well, I think the biggest, yeah.
We don't have four hundred thousand dollars?
Right, I mean, it's, that would be an argument, for sure. For sure. And like I say, you have to advertise it, you know, through your legal publication process for a period of several weeks or whatever it is. If we don't get any rip, any, any objections, I think that's really.
Can we look at?
No, that's not, he, he, he said right up front, he said, I mean, the guy that I talked to about this, I mean, he, he came right out and said, it's a process that, there's some, basically red tape to cut through, and it's, it's not necessarily an easy process. But, not to say that it's not worth four hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, four hundred K if we, if we go that way. I think it's well worth going ahead and putting in a request for it by the first of May, so that we can get on board with two thousand and seventeen, right?
How much are we looking at, like for your fees, you think, to do it?
To, to do the application?
I mean, have you looked to see how many hours you're looking at?
Yeah, no, it, I'm sure it's gonna be somewheres in the ballpark of two to five thousand would be my guess, yes, I'm gonna, it's gonna, a lot of it's gonna depend on how much information they require, but.
Which is still worth four hundred.
You know, there's a, it's a fifteen-page application, so it, you know, wanna put a little bit of time into it, cause the more time we put into it, the better chance we have, so. I would say it'd be somewheres in that two to five thousand range, I know it's kind of a big range, but.
No, but at least, I mean.
Gives you somewhat of an idea.
How far does the application process go, Justin? Do you have to submit plans and specs?
It does talk in there about submitting, I think the more you submit, the better off you are. So, I think where we're at right now is a good, a good, as far as our plans go, we have a good set of plans that aren't ready for bidding by any point, any imagination, but they're, but they're far enough along that they can see what we wanna do, they're very specific on grades, they're, you know, they can look at them and say, yeah, this is, we gotta move this much dirt, this would work well in our program, or things like that, I think, I think they'd be impressed with that.
Do they have that grade, or would you have to have that surveyed out?
We would probably have to survey it out for them. I don't know all the details there, how that would work, but they also do talk about, the city would have some, some cost and some responsibility. They talked about even lodging and stuff like that, that the city would have some responsibility for. So it wouldn't be a hundred percent free, but.
Still cheaper than four hundred thousand?
Yeah, for sure.
Some of the, haven't we done some of the survey, I mean, when you did the grading and?
Yeah, that topo survey is all done, so I would be going out and giving them the construction stakes, to tell them where to move the dirt, basically.
Yeah, I thought we surveyed that.
Well, I think we should move forward with the, with the process for submitting for the National Guard to do the work in two thousand and seventeen. I mean, it's, it's far out, but we should definitely do the work for it, any discussion on that one?
Would that take care of our, you said we have to do so much a year, you know, would this take care of for a couple of years?
When we talked about it, Sean and I and Justin, I met a couple of weeks ago, we talked about it, and I think with what we've done so far, I can't find any of the documents, I, I have to keep digging, I'm not sure where some of that stuff is, been put, but. I, I think with what we've done so far, and then if we show that we're submitting the application for the grading and stuff, I, you know, I don't know that there's anything specific from the state that says you have to do so much each year, just that you have to prove you've done something within a three-year period, which we have.
For public use.
Right, and we have, we have a plan, we've done the surveying, the, you know, the.
Done the preliminary design.
So I would think we would be satisfying that.
Applying for grants, you know, that's a pretty logical process.
Yeah, so I think as long as we can show that we're doing that much of it, I think we would be satisfied.
Very documented.
So all this work that we've, going for applications, and do we still have to put it out for bid?
No, I don't believe we'd have to put it, you know, for bids then.
No, but we have to advertise that we're going to have the work, we're gonna solicitate the Corps of Engineers or the National Guard.
The National Guard, not Corps of Engineers.
Our National Guard to do the work. For, for the project. And then, provided we get, don't get anyone that bogs at that, there's no, no naysayers, then we can move forward with the process. So whatever that's gonna be, we need to advertise that. And I would probably lean on you to come up with the wording for that, because we wanna word it in such a manner that we're gonna put it out for, you know, a, a low-cost park improvement project.
Now, that has to be out for what, seven weeks, you said?
A copy of newspaper has, have to be published twice on two separate dates. Government to use their required process to advertise for this training event. We'd have to double-check on the exact legal requirements. You know, if it's published twice on two separate dates, it's probably one week apart, so.
But they have to be publicized for so many weeks, right?
Yeah, probably two weeks, so.
And two separate.
So that's four or five.
Yeah.
So we're running pretty close to May first, by the time we get to.
No, just two separate weeks.
Just two separate weeks, probably one week at a time.
Right, right, okay.
And we just need to do it in two publications, so we can do it in the journal press and the Delmo Journal, Herald Journal.
Just the Journal, just the Journal Press, that's our regular.
Yeah, but he said it has to go in two, don't you?
Just publish twice, two separate dates, so I think you could use the same publication.
How are we on budget issues for the two to five that it's gonna take to go ahead and, I said, we good on that?
Yeah, we're fine, because we've been putting money away for regional park.
For regional park, good.
I believe there's probably a, a resolution that needs to be passed by the council, so I bring that forward here, one of your next meetings.
Like I say, March or April, we'll have, yeah, so.
Let's put that on the next council meeting for a resolution. Do we need a resolution at this meeting to have you move forward with what you've got going now?
Motion.
Motion.
That should work.
Motion would be what, all that would be, just directing you to move forward.
Now, motion?
Well, I'll make a motion to have Sean move forward with the application process.
Justin.
Justin, sorry.
Sean, if you want, you can.
Here you go.
I'm sure you'll have her hand it over.
This one's mine, Jason, but I can start up, start working on it.
Yes, so Sean can move forward with the application process.
Second?
I'll second.
Lloyd? Jill?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
I vote aye. Melissa?
Aye.
Motion carries five oh. If you go ahead and move forward with the process, we're looking at the National Guard to do the leveling work on the northernmost part of the park, or whichever park we can get them to do.
Do the whole thing.
Yeah.
The whole thing.
So, in a perfect world, what would be the earliest groundbreaking, Justin? Just based on what I'm seeing here, it's bringing it seventeen, looks like October of twenty sixteen would be the earliest.
Most logical, we'll probably spring up seventeen.
Yeah.
Sometimes late fall grading work is a good thing, I would, I would, if that's the, if that's the timeline, sometimes if you can leave it flexible up to the contractor to either start in the fall of twenty sixteen or spring of twenty seventeen, that works well.
That works well, too.
That brings us into another subject for the use of that land that we need to talk about also.
Yes, we've been renting that property to Scott Coles. He rented it prior to the city taking it over. He pays us three thousand dollars a year to rent those fifteen acres or fourteen acres, whatever's up there. Do we want to, do we want to continue then for twenty fifteen, I need to let him know? It's incoming.
Twenty sixteen?
Twenty fifteen.
This year's.
This year's already done. He's already got the seeds in.
No, it's still February twenty fifteen right now.
Well, yeah, he'd be.
So he want, I need to let him know that he wants to.
Yeah, we need to have a motion for that as well?
No, I just need to let him know, that's fine.
Yep, we'll proceed, let him go ahead and re-rent that.
Might as well, as long as we're not doing anything else in there.
Projected start.
They will know by next spring.
Yep.
Where we can do it again next year.
And even with him, with an October start date, that should still let him be able to.
I would guess if he knew that we were planning on maybe possibly starting in the fall of twenty sixteen, he would probably put, if you, if we rented it, he probably would put beans in it, that he'd take out early enough and.
Yeah, nobody's got in there this year.
Well, I'm assuming it'll be corn, be going in this year.
Did he have beans in it last year? I'm sure he put corn in.
Yeah, beans.
Okay, ditch, are we done on that one, Justin?
Yep.
Ditch thirty-eight.
I guess, well, just back up one thing, just to make sure, everybody then, I mean, is we good with just, we're proceeding with, with the application, not doing anything this year as far as any thing in the southwest corner, or trying to get any, you know, any intermediate things going as far as any, anything in that area?
I tried to, I finally got Hanover to call me back, Scott from Hanover, about their hockey rink over in Hanover. He's been on vacation, I'm all the nerve. And he didn't know anything about it because the hockey athletic assoc, our Hanover Athletic Association takes care of their field. So he had me call a guy in Rockford, and that guy has not called me back yet. Because the Hanover Athletic Association gave fifty thousand dollars to Rockford to build a hockey rink in Rockford, and then Rockford has to maintain it from there, but.
Yeah, and I know that there were offers out there to have a Zamboni use for no charge as well, if we put up a hockey rink here in Montrose. At least I got that while I was knocking on doors.
Where we're gonna put that is where all the field's gonna go.
Uh, this, this area is pretty flat right now. This, this section, there, there's a little grading work that would need to be done here, but if it's something you guys really felt like trying to get something going earlier, I think something, we could look at accommodating that.
Maybe we should see if what we find out from the National Guard, if we're going to be able to use them for free, because if we are, that would be something we could possibly do yet this fall, what, wanted, you know, the grading, like the hockey thing or something?
Like just do ourselves, yeah.
And put up like a hockey thing, if we know, if we know we don't have to spend four hundred dollars on grading.
Not by ourselves, I mean, with a small contract.
Right now, that's got a baseball field on it, how much use are we getting on that baseball field, are we getting anything on it?
Practice is about it. There's a few teams that practice there every now and then, if they can't get on another field, but very rarely.
You know, if we put up the ice rink, would we be able to flip flop back and forth to a field summer and, uh, the ice rink in the winter?
I think we could take the baseball field out completely, cause like I said, it's very little use.
You return that hockey rink into a soccer field?
That works.
Which then community is willing to come out and.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is it parking concerns in the winter time with the hockey rink in that area?
Sean?
Right now, we use that area for snow storage.
Can we put it on the?
Well, that makes it a damn hard park, doesn't it?
Can we put it on that little one acre piece? The snow.
But Justin, by, by putting that in there and all that dirt to the north there, isn't that gonna interfere somewhat what we were gonna do with that dirt up north?
Um, I think, well, when I said move the dirt from here down here, is more, it's more kinda from this line north. Like, this is kind of our, our fill area, it's kinda on the west half, I guess you call it, where the road stuff is going. And, and bringing this dirt down.
Or you see where that.
This area here is all, I mean, that's where the baseball field is right now, and if you picture that baseball field, it's pretty flat, you know, really where that baseball field is.
What is that, an octagon or hexagon shelter there?
This, yeah.
Where that ditch is to the north, it loses elevation in a hurry.
That's where mostly the dirt is.
That's where everything from the north would be transported down.
So we wouldn't have to worry about hauling dirt out. That's what we're trying to do, is balance the site.
So, Justin, if we were to grade this other section here.
This one?
Yes. Is that gonna interfere with excess dirt coming off the north end, if we were to haul dirt in from somewhere else for this year?
Uh, I would have to look at my kelks and make sure that that's, that we can rebalance the site, basically.
Cause I've got two berms that I could haul from pretty much all summer long, and we could grade that ourselves.
Or, I mean, oh yeah, because we don't wanna do this, cause the farmer's on it. Is that what you're thinking?
Yeah.
Yeah. I think, I'd have to look at my kelks, but I would think we'd be able to accommodate that, I mean, there's enough, there's a huge area. And I don't, there's not a lot of grading in here, so we should be able to rebalance the site, just raise everything up a little bit if we need to, even a tenth or two makes a bit.
It spreads it out in that bigger area.
And it's not a huge moment.
Is that correct or stationary, or will that be cut out?
Um, that I think we're proposing, I can't remember, it's been a while since we've looked at that, but. Okay, well, maybe it was a slight swell in there, so kind of a partial fill, but. Yeah, there was still a, it'd be kind of a, kind of a, what I call a swell, or a little bit of a ditch, kinda on this side here, kinda coming around through here, just to kinda bring this stuff down through there.
So if application has to be in by May first, do you think by late summer, early fall, we'd have some kind of a feel what their thoughts are?
I didn't see anything in there on their word timeline.
Okay.
So I don't know what it is. I wouldn't expect it to move fast.
No, quick rush on there.
Yeah, right, you got a stamp for me, Lloyd?
You put a little added words on there, that tends to put a "in" in their call box.
It might go right straight in the garbage can.
But meanwhile, that would make the eyes of our residents, well, they are doing something out there.
Yeah, it gives us, it gives us the opportunity to be able to put an ice rink out there, we can work forward with the other teams and maybe get some funding to do the ice rink, as well as be able to work with a soccer field as well. And that gives us good opportunity to use what is usable on the site, still get the revenue from the cropland, and then move forward with how we're gonna grade it, do the mixture. and then move forward with how we're gonna grade it, do the mature, I think it's gonna use. How about the gardens, where are the community gardens on there?
They're over there.
Well, they're over there, okay. I thought they weren't closer to the.
Which really, we have no, I mean, this is way long-term plans there, so.
So if we were to work on this in the summer of twenty fifteen, how much money did we want to spend?
Need to look at where we're at on the budget.
Yeah, how much are we putting away in the budget?
Yep.
They're at about a hundred and.
It's almost two hundred and eighty.
It's almost, yeah, it's about a hundred and eighty thousand is in there right now. We use where we're at. We put in sixty thousand in twenty thirteen, seventy-four thousand in twenty fourteen, and I think another seventy-five thousand in twenty fifteen will be going in there. It's from our LGA money that we're getting, it's going in there. So we're right around ten thousand, we've spent, I don't know, twenty-something thousand on the surveying and stuff and all the, all the plans and all the meetings we had prior.
Joe will have to look at, the filled dirt is free.
Yep.
We've already paid for it, we don't have to buy it, we just gotta pay to haul it.
Mm-hmm. And if you could solve it, it'd be quite a bit less.
Correct.
Yep. And you just do it in between your other projects.
Right.
And it's, there's certainly not a rush on it, but we're not looking at using it until winter next year, so. Wait until you have a project, you know, an ongoing project when there's time. Does that work?
It works for me, I just need to know what kind of, what I wanna go forward with, so I can start planning my guys for the summer.
We do a SWIP, we need to do, I think that, that's probably gonna be over an acre, is it?
Oh, yeah.
I'm sure that's a little over an acre.
Easy.
So we'll need to do a, um, NPDS permit application SWIP, which is pretty easy, we already have the basis for it, or it's basically putting up some self-fence and a plan and some details and a permit application, uh, NPCS.
So that will be, we will put in a temporary parking lot, or gravel, I would say, in anticipation of making that long-term. And then where it says possible outdoor hockey rink, is that where we wanna go with that slash soccer field?
Mm-hmm.
We just wanna start with one for now, or do the whole area?
Depends on how much dirt we have. You know, where we end up with it.
Okay.
And you may wanna look at what our fill is gonna need to be in order to level that out as well.
We can certainly do that.
See what we've got, and then based on how much dirt we have, we can go at least to do the first soccer field and the full-size soccer field and the, and the outdoor hockey rink. And then we can start looking at the other fields till last, kinda, yeah, as we, as we, you know, go through the dirt that we've got or what we've got available. And then it's time permits too, who knows what might come up. But that makes sense to be able to have a permit and work that through the summer and be able to.
Works for us, just makes sense.
And then Wendy, if you could also follow up, and we'll look at saying, hey, we wanna work towards getting a hockey field ready for next year. And then, uh, who's, I'm not a hockey player, so anybody got any contact with hockeyers? There's the hockey mom. Hockey players, you got a hockey mom? Okay, um, cause I know there's a group that works out of Montrose as well, and, and maybe look at them and see if they can give some assistance for. I don't know who the name is, um, I know where they live, I could stop by and talk to them again.
Where are they at?
They're, um, I don't know what the street name is.
Some Pheasant Ridge?
No, they're not in Pheasant, Pheasant Ridge, they're, so, straight north, and then the road that cuts off to the left from, uh, cause I don't even know what the name of the street is on that one. I'll have to give you a street address, I know, I know about where they're at, I think they're second house from the end on that road, and I'll have to give you, but I don't even know what the name of the street is.
This is somebody that's involved in hockey?
Yeah, they're, they're, they're the one who offered the Zamboni for no charge and doing the rink, if we put up a rink. Cause they said they'd be able to provide a Zamboni for their team.
Why are they getting the Zamboni?
Don't know. Don't know, but they were looking at being able to have that and be able to provide that with us, so. I'll get, I'll get back with the name.
Is it up on the Pheasant Ridge area?
No.
No.
I, I got a map, I can zoom in, like, west, east, west, kinda, to the right, so I can zoom in further. Is it north of Old?
Nope.
You don't have to ask for it.
That's a little green. What? It's related, there's not many Montrose. Meet, meet next Tuesday, maybe. I don't know where they found, I don't know, we ain't getting a Zamboni.
In, in the streets. There's very many people interested in soccer.
Soccer fields are full. Full, community wants to come. Same with Delano, Delano, they're all swamped, all in, every surrounding community, it's, it's.
Yeah, soccer's really, they're even talking about having a national soccer.
Was that? Hockey, or not hockey, soccer, Delano soccer. That's what, that's what's in that building. Wright County, yeah, Wright County soccer, yeah. Isn't there entertainment building?
Oh, the big building in Delano?
Yeah.
They're doing indoor soccer?
It's indoor soccer field.
This is County Road twelve.
Um, I don't know if the, does the Buffalo Hockey Association, do they still do pull tabs?
Yeah.
Wonder if they'd be willing to help us a little bit with the, as long as it's.
Uh, BBTs, they're down there, they're bunkers and J's. Buffalo Barn Grill.
I was saying, trying to think bunkers, but that's the golf course.
Mm-hmm, and then J's.
Okay. Cause I don't think, uh, Hanover Athletic Association wants to give me money. They might, I mean, I don't know, but, I know that's, they're a big group over there, they do pull tabs too, with it.
Yeah.
Hanover Athletic.
I was at the last hockey board meeting, and they were waiting to see what we're doing.
Okay.
Fairmont. Fairmont Avenue is where it's at, and the Fairmont Avenue, second on the end of the right of this one.
Oh, I think I know who that is.
It's all just off of Seventh, Seventh Street North, you're on about.
It's, um, the, the women's, the newbies.
Right here or right there?
Um, Kristen. I think I know who they're talking about, I can't think of her last name. But her husband is in, is, um, I don't know if he coaches, but they have a, a rink in their backyard. They always make one. Maybe, I'm trying to think of what their last name is.
Rankin, Mike, Mike and Jamie Rankin?
No. Kristen and.
Ennis, Mike and Kristen Ennis.
Yes.
Yep.
Who was it?
Michael and Kristen Ennis.
Yeah. They have a rink in their backyard, maybe they have their own Zamboni and that's what they do. Letting us use for free, which would be great, but is there an insurance issue?
They're not the flat maps?
Six twenty Fairmont Avenue, yeah.
Six twenty?
Yeah, yeah, I'm sure it's on. What's that name?
Ennis.
E-N-N-I-S.
Michael and Kristen Ennis. Okay, anything else on that?
Yes, now you can do a ditch update.
Move to the ditch?
Go into the ditch.
So is that quite as exciting?
And I'll put that on the agenda for target like the two.
All of it, be it important. All right, um, ditch thirty-eight is a drainage ditch that, I did not make copies of this for everybody, but, uh, see up here, this red line, Truck Highway twelve, here's the Mobile Home Park right here, here's the Preserve of Montrose. This blue line right here is the, per the Wright, Wright County, the, the County Road ditch thirty-eight area. As most of you probably know, there's, uh, water that backs up, you know, both sides of the highway right here, it's gotten higher and higher throughout the years, um, to a point where it's, um, gotten encroaching up on the trailer park area here. It's encroached close to this, this, uh, building right here. Um, really, as from a city's perspective, we haven't had any issues with it, I don't believe at this time. Um, but what the deal is, is there's a tile line that runs underneath the trailer park. It's a, uh, it's a pipe, basically, um, that goes under all the trailer, trailer homes and takes drainage from, from this area, this low area right here, and discharges it through an open ditch on the other side of the trailer park. There's an open ditch through here, it goes through a series of culverts under Clemente Avenue here, back under Clemente again, and then back over under Clemente again. And then it eventually discharges out and drainage keeps going, then through, basically through Rolling Meadows, and eventually goes to the Grove River. Anyway, this is a ditch thirty-eight, um, the way a county ditch works is, um, it's maintained by the county, but all, all costs associated with maintaining those ditches, and this is, and there's a series of many, many ditches in the county. Um, it's governed by state drainage law, ditch law, and those costs are, are distributed out evenly or appropriately accordingly to the property owners that benefit from that ditch. So basically, the property owners that have drainage going to that ditch pay for any improvements that are needed to that ditch. Whether it be cleaning it out, dredging it, fixing, fixing a tile line, fixing a pipe, anything like that, that's all. Um, back, uh, there's been a history of issues with this, this issue's been getting worse and worse. Basically, the county has televised the line under the trailer park, there's a collapsed pipe under there, a partially collapsed pipe, blocking the drainage. And then the pipe's in very poor condition, it's very old, it's, Trailer Park was built in the sixties, I believe, so I don't even know how old the pipe is. Anyway, um, that's the issue. The first step basically that the county's done is what's called a redetermination of benefits. So there was a, a map that I explained, uh, a list of property owners that supposedly benefit from this ditch. Well, after everybody started looking at that, it was found that that list was very inaccurate. Uh, there's property owners that were being, um, assessed. Um, well, I don't think they're being assessed cause, cause I don't think there's been anything done on the ditch, but there was property owners on that list that, um, didn't even drain to the ditch. And there was other properties that weren't on the list that did drain to the ditch, so it was inaccurate, it was incomplete. So they hired a, um, viewer to determine exactly who benefits from this. That process is, is underway right now, and the, the public hearing was the public hearing that Greg and I went to a few weeks ago on that. And basically, they finalized that list now, and the county will adopt, adopt that final list. One thing I wanna bring to your attention on that is, there's two ways that the county can do that. They can either assess each individual property within city limits and put that individually on the tax rolls. So basically, if you own a, a little lot, you know, in any development in the city, you'll get an assessment on your tax, taxes each year that shows up as a ditch, a ditch assessment. Or they can lump all the properties together within the city and assess the city, and then the city has the right to, um, basically assess those individual property owners back. But they have to let the county know what they wanna do. So, to make a long story short, what the county did, the first time they, the first time that they, um, submitted the list to us, they had each individual property owner within Montrose and within Waverly assessed, uh, a cost. Then, they revised the list based on public comment, and one of the revisions that they did to it is they then lump summed all the properties within Montrose and all the properties within Waverly, and are charging each individual city a lump sum cost. The cost is the same either way, it's just the fact that you're giving the cost directly to the city, and then they can either pay for it out of, out of however they choose to pay for it, or they can assess it back to those same property owners. Now, when you assess it back to the property owners, if the city decides, tells the county that that's what they wanna do, that assessment's gonna show up as being a city assessment. So the city's gonna get the calls. They might get it anyway.
That's not the, not all the property owners in Montrose, it's just in the watershed of the ditch.
That's correct, so the watershed, so this green line, I know it's hard to see here, but basically, the, the area that's within city limits that are draining to that, that affects, is, is down by the Hillside Lane. Hillside Lane, is that right? No.
Hillside Lane.
Hill Street?
Hill Street.
Yeah, Hill Street.
Um, kind of the southwest corner of that, Meadowbrook Cottage's area. Um, the Excel, um, industrial park where Excel is at, um, the Preserve of Montrose. Those are, uh, the, uh, the trailer park is not in city limits.
Pat Solonik.
They're the biggest, yeah?
Pat Solonik, yeah. Now, now, if you're not in city limits, then they get assessed, so they get assessed.
Look at such a garden.
Directly from the county.
Okay.
Yes, Pat Solonik is a, is a, is one to make sure we didn't mention because of that.
So herein lies the problem is, everybody pays stormwater fees already on your monthly utility bill. So is it fair to assess everybody that is in this watershed, since they're already paying stormwater fees? Is it fair for them to get another assessment? Or does the city eat it and pay with it by the stormwater fees? However, the big problem is, is Pat Solonik is in the city limits, who is a big farmer on the edge of town and pays no stormwater fees. So why do we wanna pay his assessment?
Correct.
So how do we make it fair? Because he's never paid a stormwater fee, so it's not fair to not charge him, but if we gotta charge one, it's almost like we have to charge them all, so.
There's two things that come up. One, an equitable way to assess the, the, this, the assessment, you know, and if we're already charging them a stormwater fee, then we should say that, yeah, part of that will be included in the cost of our stormwater. As long as our stormwater amounts that are out there now will cover that cost. Those that are not paying stormwater fees, we should assess.
And that's something we probably could put in a resolution, that if you, if you pay stormwater fees, you won't be charged any additional assessment. However, until we know what the final cost is.
Yeah.
You know, they're talking, if it's a hundred thousand dollar project and you live on Hill Street, you might pay sixteen dollars for the year.
Right.
The only problem is, is we all know it's not gonna be a hundred thousand dollar project, we're gonna be looking at anywhere from a half a million to a million. So now, the sixteen becomes sixteen hundred, and do, we don't have money in our stormwater fund to pay all of that.
We've gotta know how much the, the amount is going to be. I think it's, if it is not something that's reasonable to fit in the stormwater budget, then we need to make a separate assessment based on benefit for the ditch. And if they're not paying water, stormwater fees, that assessment will need to be higher, you know, based on them not paying the stormwater fees.
Yeah, and I mean, you know, when we do a road improvement, the people that live along the road, if they benefit from the sidewalk and such, they get the assessment. The rest of the city doesn't, so, in essence, it, you know, you are benefiting from this, because it's gonna drain your property, so, you know, like you said, the bad thing is gonna be, it has to be a city assessment, and so.
Are they going, are they routing, rerouting that ditch around the trailer park now?
I don't think they know what they're gonna do.
They don't, they don't know.
They don't know yet?
No, that's, like I said, that's the first step in the process, to see who, who, who was in the area, and then, from there, now they gotta do, um, basically, an assessment, a preliminary engineering analysis to determine.
What they're gonna do.
What's the fix.
Yeah.
So do we have to tell them how we're gonna pay for it before, or do, can we wait till I know what it's gonna be?
Well, we're gonna get a bill this fall for the first part of it, which is a pretty small amount at this time. I think Bob from the county thought it was gonna be, he didn't know for sure, but I mean, it's, it's under fifty thousand for sure. Um, I think it was like twenty, thirty thousand, something like that, and, and it's for the redetermination of the benefits, it's for the televising, it's for these other miscellaneous things that they've been doing, it's not really for any construction cost. We won't know what the construction cost is until that, until the county hires somebody to, to analyze this.
And that amount is feasible to fit within the, the water fees?
Well, yes, but we could also do at that point, I think we could do a resolution for an assessment, just like we do now for assessments, that says, if you pay stormwater fees, you will not be assessed. If you don't pay stormwater fees, you're gonna be assessed your portion of it.
Exactly.
So that, you know, someone like Pat Solonik would have to pay his own.
Right, I agree.
Assessment, because he's never paid, you know, it's, it's kinda difficult for everybody sitting here that pays the fees, why would you wanna pay his portion? When he's never paid.
And I think that's fair.
So I would think we could, as long as we get it early enough from the county, cause weren't they saying they thought by September?
I think he was gonna try to set it on September after we're, yeah.
Yeah, cause we just have to have it to the, come back to the county for the assessment itself.
And then it do, so it comes out as well, so we have to carry it until, uh, we had to carry that for a while.
That's.
Well, how many people are on that list?
So it's due when it comes out.
For like thirty days or something.
And then we have to carry it until we end up being able to, you know, re. And then we have to carry it until we end up being able to, you know, recruit that.
Right, which is, I mean, with assessments, we normally do anyway, I mean, I, just like a delegate bill, water bill. Um, but we would be able, as long as we have it, so that we can get it properly assessed by, before November thirtieth. So if they get it to us in September, we can go through the proper steps for assessing it and get it to the county by November thirtieth.
So how big of a list is it just in the, where it's going to affect immediately those people that are going to benefit from it?
This is the entire...
I'm not going to benefit from it, you know?
No, no, um, this is, this is the, this is the list right here, it's forty pages long, I mean, it's, this is in each individual property, now that, you get into the Waverly area and there's many more parcels there, individual parcels than there is in Montrose, so that, this, this list includes a lot of individuals that are owned by, by developers, actually.
But the Waverly portion, they'll take care of that.
Yep, yep, so I, you know, I don't know exactly how many, but, I don't know, there's less than a hundred, I would say.
Fifty? It's like when you put that new sewer pipe in, in front of there on Buffalo Avenue, all the residents paid for that, right? Yeah, and there's a considerable piece that goes against the preserve as well, that stuff.
Yeah, because it goes through the preserve.
Mm-hmm. And that would be just a lump sum to the city, they don't want all their bills. But maybe not in the future.
So as we move forward, they, we would be able to make, when they finally get a final list?
So there might be multiple years of assessing.
Yeah, there will be.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, they usually do drag it out, yeah. And if they have to reroute it, that's going to be a considerable project, which I assume they probably will do, because there's no way they can...
They're not going to dig up the trailer park?
They'll dig up the trailer park.
That's the only real, that's the only real good solution.
There's a border line underneath it.
Yeah, it looks like they may go down the river to trace, I think that's probably going to be in the, coming back under, to drain, but depends on how that...
So just to give you an idea on, so we're basically, the parcels that are within the city limits are, uh, fifteen percent of the cost is kind of the, because it's about fifteen thousand dollars on a hundred thousand dollar cost is what's within city limits. And that includes, that includes the preserve.
Okay. That's, that's citywide?
Yeah, that's correct. Yep.
So we need to look at the next meeting, have a... Something that goes in law, just to assess at a different rates as well.
We won't do that till fall.
Till fall?
Yeah.
Okay.
Because once they get us the, once we would get the final list, is that, that's not the final list?
This is going to be approved at...
That is the list?
This is basically the list, um, it's not the final approved list, um, but it's supposed to be approved here. Do you remember what, it was coming up in February, right?
Okay, but they, we won't be able to do the resolution and stuff until we get the bill, and then we do those in the fall. And then we'll lay out a bill for how much it costs, and then, so, once we get closer in it.
You'll talk to the city attorney, make sure that we have the proper documents and stuff like that.
Yep, yep, we'll work with Andy and...
So being that the city's going to be essentially footing fifteen percent of the project, is there any oversight that we need to do as far as engineering?
Well, my, I guess my opinion is yes, I mean, it's, I think we need to make sure we're on the lookout for what they're doing, because it does affect our stormwater system, um, and if it's done, I mean, we need to make sure that quantity and, and rate are being mapped and even, you know, talked about in the past is, they've asked us in the past if we want to pay an extra amount to increase the rate, so if that's an eight inch pipe under the trailer park, you know, would, would we, would we want to upsize that at all and pay for the upsize charge? That's something that we need to analyze, my initial thought is no, um, because really, we require all developers and all development to, to decrease the rate of runoff, you know, by ponds and such. So I don't, initially don't see a, a reason for that, but, yeah, I mean, we're paying for fifteen percent of the cost. They'll give us an opportunity to review the reports and make comments on them and such.
How about as far as construction inspection?
I would, I would say that we should be involved in that as well.
I would say for fifteen percent, we ought to be.
Yeah.
Million dollar project, potentially.
Yeah, because if something's not done correctly, now, we're not owning and maintaining it per se, but we're owning, we're responsible fifteen percent of the cost.
Correct. And in ten years, we're doing it again.
Yep.
I will, um, I will get with Andy, I'll talk to him and see what's legal. You know, if we assess one, if we have to assess them all in that area, or if we can do it based on who pays stormwater fees, I will check with him and see what's legal and what's not before.
And when we talk to, to, again, Buffalo, you said that he thought that was something we could do?
Bob, Bob.
Yeah.
About heeble, that's who we've been talking to.
Yeah, I thought you said...
He seemed to think that.
He seemed that it was something we could do. We just want to be sure we're on good footing, you know?
Yeah, I don't want to do anything that's illegal.
No. Waiting on the county.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else on the ditch?
I don't think so, I'll keep you posted, as, we'll continue to stay involved and make sure the city's interests are protected, so.
That's good, then. The solar energy site.
A company by the name of Sunshare approached us and talked to us about, um, putting in solar energy. We have the, the one called Geronimo doing the Aurora project that's going on, Fermi apples, um, that they've been having the public hearings about, but we, this is another company. Apparently, Excel has contracted with three solar energy companies, and this would be one of the, another, I mean, would be one of those three. And when they approached us, they talked to us about going in Turnings Field, and Joanne asked, um, was a little concerned about that, because that is such great property with highway frontage and we have that zoned potential commercial, future commercial, so we really didn't want them in the field, but then the more we talked, we found out they would be backed by our ponds, by our wastewater plant. So then Sean said, maybe you want to look at our wastewater plant and go there instead. So they went with you, went with Sean out to the plant, and they're interested in doing part of it or all of it actually at our plant. I'm not sure how much more they would go in, if they needed to go into Turnings, they would come north.
They sure didn't mention anything to us about it.
Yeah, they did, you know, they probably come north from where they're at by the plant, so they stay away from Highway twelve.
It'd be down in that slope where the ditch is, huh? Well, if you look at, see the last page of your packet? Already got it?
Yep.
You see the, part of the footprint of the plant is outlined in red. And essentially, if you drew a line just west of the two area ponds, there's a stormwater sewer line that runs through here. So essentially, from there over back to Highway twenty-five would be the proposed area of the project. Um, the reason why there are such, uh, great interest in this is, there is a substation right across the street or highway, that would be a ideal location for them to feed their solar field project from then. And whether or not, this would be the entire scope of it or not, we certainly haven't been told that. If they go further into Turnings, we don't know. Um, this paperwork here tonight is what they call a non-binding letter of intent. If I'm...
Mm-hmm.
This is a document that's required of their company to start spending funds and researching how this would fit into their project, this site would be. And there's no commitment by the city, um, from what I can gather, other than letting them start working on this.
Do you think that's a good idea, though, to give up our land there in case we have to enlarge the sewer system at a later date? I don't, I don't think that's a very good idea.
Well, if we ever expand this plant, it'll be smaller, we will get away from the pond system and be going to more mechanical plant, which you could run, the size of this acreage over here, you could run half of Minneapolis through mechanical plant in this size of footprint. So, we're about to the point now at this plant where any further expansion will be less settling ponds and more mechanical treatment, and it'd actually reduce the size of the footprint of the plant.
But I think before we go ahead with anything, um, planning and zoning is working on an ordinance for, uh...
And Joanne knows that we have this letter of intent, and we can go ahead and sign it.
But she never talked about this, the zoning and planning.
Oh, well, this is, all this is...
So I don't think we should be letting them spend their money doing that when it's not going to be approved.
You don't think it's going to be approved?
Well, it depends on the ordinance that they draw. Well, I know that Joanne was drafting an ordinance, or proposed an ordinance for solar, because we don't have one.
Correct.
That was primarily the reason for drafting that, you know, putting the ordinance out there is because there's nothing in our city ordinances that addresses solar energy.
Correct, and by the time these guys met with us, they were here, the Tuesday, she was here, um, it was too late to get anything in the paper to actually have the ordinance at the last planning zoning meeting, because it has to be a public hearing, and it was too late to get it published, so that's why it has to go to the March meeting. However, she had the ordinance ready to go so that they could review it, and if they had any questions and anything to...
There was a lot of changes made in it, so. And I also know that Sunshare has approached other cities and municipalities as well. They're kind of shopping around, because I know they've addressed Waverly as well. County homes called me and let me know that they, they've gotten a proposal as well. Um, as far as this, it would be a lease of the property, we wouldn't be turning over the property, so it'd be a long-term lease. For twenty-five or fifty years. Yeah, it'd be a long-term lease, so it'd be a revenue positive proposal for that. Doesn't look like it'd impact anything that we have down there, other than maybe, depending upon how far they go over to our, our, um, uh, cutting these piles and our, our yard waste.
That'll have to be moved.
We can move that somewhere else.
Yeah, yeah, that has to go, they take that whole area.
Yep, so...
The, the good thing is, too, is they would maintain all the property around it, so they would put grass or whatever underneath it. They would maintain the whole thing, so it'll cut down on all of our mowing of that part of the plant, which a little part of it, now we have somebody cut and bale, the rest of it, we mow.
Yep, plus we get a lease fee on it as well as...
This is by no means any signed, shaped, formal contract. It's just a, the city of Montrose is allowing them to look at this site.
Just says it allows them to, allows us to, what this allows us to do is enter the parcel into our system and begin an in-depth study of the electrical capacity of the electrical lines and the substation, as well as the topography. So it's not, it's just a formality on our end, because this is when we start investing our own resources and time, so it's not anything that says, you know, they may, they may look at it and say, it's not going to work for us, we don't want to be there even.
Well, I don't think that that'll be the case, because they wouldn't waste their time in the beginning, they're...
Yeah, I mean, I don't, who knows?
But I don't know.
By twenty twenty?
Now we getting up against twenty-five, and that's a highway for commercial and stuff. I don't know, why do we want to give that up?
Well, we won't be using our plant for a commercial.
It's not zoned commercial.
No, no, but the plant is back far enough, nobody sees that, you know, because it's down in Hollow. Are they going to build all their solar panels down in that hollow then, running knockers out? Because that way the people that live along here, including me, will have to be looking at those panels, who wants to do that? Most of the solar outfits that I've been talking to, they prefer to build out of the city limits.
What kind of revenue would this bring to the city?
To pay rent based on the, basically on the going rate of, what do they call it, the?
Ag rate.
Ag rate.
Ag rate.
I've heard as much as seven hundred dollars an acre.
I, there was some, um, I get emails on the clerk's list serve.
Per year or one day?
And there was, there was some, um, author that said they, they rented some, I mean, there was some that have solar in their, on their wastewater plants and things, and they were getting seven hundred dollars per acre. I don't know what the ag rate out here is, if it's a two, three hundred dollars an acre, I'm not sure, but, you know, what do we have there, fifteen acres?
Approximately nineteen.
Nineteen acres, even at two hundred dollars an acre. It's cheaper than us mowing, I mean, it's money that we're not spending, because we don't have to mow.
Well, we got to think about the residents that live along there, it's going to be affected. We're going to sit out there and look at the panels. So we should have a public hearing first to see if there's any opposition from the people that live there.
How many residents would it directly affect?
I don't, I don't know, no, it would, uh, all the way up twenty-five, and even like...
Why all the way up twenty-five, they'd only be at the wastewater plant, which is, I don't know, yeah, I mean, there's...
But if they were to pay seven hundred dollars an acre, why nineteen acres, that's like almost fourteen thousand dollars a year? For nothing, really, or still...
Yeah, I don't know how much, when you said that, I don't know if it's two...
Fourteen thousand, fourteen.
I don't know if it's two, three hundred dollars, I don't know what it is out here, not really, three, four hundred.
So...
I don't know what the ag rate is.
It's income for doing nothing, because we're saving the money on mowing and, yeah.
And, and when we get, when we get down to the, the process, we may make sure that there's some kind of a screening process where they have trees or something along that one edge.
I think they talked about screening, didn't they?
Screening, yeah.
Yeah, so then we have a buffer zone between the, between the residents, so you wouldn't be looking out over that. So there'd be a tree zone or whatever, and that certainly would be, wouldn't be a problem for them to be able to put that in. But that's down once they get the plan, and we, you know, require it.
Yeah, I mean, once, what would happen is, once they start looking into it, I mean, this is my understanding, once they start looking into it, then you would, I mean, actually go through the formal contract process, negotiate everything.
And then they would have to bring in before planning and zoning, planning and zoning, have to approve it, and then, then we have the public hearing.
There wouldn't even be a public hearing, because if there's an ordinance in place, you don't need to have a public hearing to put it in. I mean, you wouldn't waste the money on having another public hearing once, you have a public hearing to adopt the ordinance, but once the ordinance is there, you wouldn't do a public hearing to put it in, as long as they're following the ordinance. And we checked with Wright County, Joanne called Wright County to see if they had some kind of an ordinance, and Wright County doesn't have an ordinance, they're waiting for one of the solar companies to bring one forward so that they can adopt it. So it's...
So what we're looking for now is a motion to go ahead and allow them to do the preliminary, preliminary planning for the site. And to approve that, is there further discussion on that? Other than what we already heard, I know, got objections for Sunline site from Lloyd.
Well, I think some of the neighbors would kill us if they were here.
The line of sites are concerned.
But honestly, I think it can draw people into the community, because we, I go to other communities and I'll be like, they have solar, you know, solar plants essentially, and it just makes you wonder, because then you ought, you assume that your energy bill is going to be slightly less.
And it will.
No.
Right.
It will, it will, um...
Well, mine won't, because I'm Wright County, but it won't.
Yeah, we'll make yours, well...
It won't help me.
They have to, too, there's...
Yours is generated by you.
No, it's not, believe me.
You know, outside of the fourteen thousand that we'd get for rent, there isn't much better.
The customers do, though.
What we were told is that, I mean, Joanne was explaining it, there, the law was passed, what, a couple of years ago, that all of the, um, energy companies have to have some sort of, uh, renewable source of energy. And Wright Haven is putting up windmills, actually, they've got one up and they're putting another one up. Excel's plant has decided to go with solar, and so...
Twenty percent by twenty twenty.
Is it twenty percent by twenty twenty? That they have to...
Why wouldn't they want to build a solar panel right out there by their plant?
This is not, I'm not sure, because it's accessibility to that substation, it's...
Yeah, and the way that they do that is that they, they back that into a substation, and then the substation actually feeds the rest of the, the network. So they come in and they backfit, back... So they come in and they backfeed, backfeed into the, the substation, that substation, and then they get paid for whatever electricity they generate into the system.
And then they, it can be a reduction. There, there could be a reduction, as, as they put it, there, there could be a reduction in your energy.
They said one megawatt is two hundred homes.
Yeah, I can't remember. It might be in some of this too, I'm not sure.
Forty acres is almost eight megawatts. So this would be roughly four megawatts. If they were to develop the whole forty acres.
That seems, that number seems to be pretty consistent, that two megawatt per acre number. I've kind of paid attention in Dronimos, about that, if you look at all their proposed sites. And I also read that they're trying to, even Dronimal with Excel, they're trying to locate these near, um, near cities basically, or near population centers. Because my understanding and what I've read is that if they can get the, you know, get these periodically by the, by the population centers where the energy is mostly used, that's the most efficient use of, of it. And that's why they want to buy the substation and it's, it's efficient than distributing it.
Anything over transmitting from twenty-eight to twenty-nine.
So if you do look at most of those, like Dronimal sites that they're doing for Excel, they're, they're by the close, close by cities or by the substation, that's the key. They're not, you know, in the city.
Is that Dronimal deal gonna go through?
I mean, everything has been approved to date on it. Still has hurdles to, to go through, but it sure seems like everything's progressing along.
I think they've shifted the actual site two or three times, but it's still on the same property. From what I've seen.
Yeah, the last I saw it was just directly west of Rock Brook.
Yeah, that's where it was, but then I heard that that didn't prove out for some odd reasons.
The lay is a little bit further west of there. So any further discussion? Have a motion to allow approval of the non-binding agreement, have to allow them to proceed.
I'll make a motion to approve the non-binding letter of intent for Sun Shear to start the process of solar panels and wastewater plant.
Okay, Jill?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
I vote aye.
Aye.
Lloyd?
Go.
Okay. She carries four one. Go ahead and allow Sun Shear to, to do preliminary estimates on the, the site. And whenever you need me to sign that, let me know.
Before you leave.
Good, I can do that. Take one of those and pass it around that way. We had talked about goal setting. And I've asked everybody to kind of come up with three goals that they wanted to see during their terms. I did some initial work on, um, what goals are. Where our current vision is. And our current vision that's on the website is actually a mission statement. It's not a vision statement. Uh, vision statements are kind of a one over the world where we're looking at the, the grand shining city on, on the hill, if you will. That's something that may never be obtained. But it's something that we espouse or, or try to get to. The mission statement is kind of the nuts and bolts, the, the, the larger pieces of how we do that, how we get to that vision. And then, um, the purpose is, is basically what our people do in order to make that happen. Now, what drives that, 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 uh, mission? And then the goals are those steps, or those broken down that allows us to get to that mission. Uh, and then there may be specific sub-goals or specific challenges or key projects that are tied into those goals. But the overall goals, the council should establish the vision, the mission, kind of the purpose, and the goals we wanna push forward to. And that allows then the city staff to be able to work based upon a common goal process. So they understand where we should allocate resources and where we should focus, where things should be addressed as far as the city resources. So that's kind of where we wanna look at. Establishing good goals as to where we wanna go from here in, in the next two years. We do have a process coming up with a goal setting. Uh, we wanna do that on a Saturday, uh, if possible. I know we're looking at a date. Michelle, you said you were not available on any of those. Do you have any dates in mind that-
We just figured a date and now she, um, she's not available.
Okay, what dates do we kind of have that might work?
Well, you work this Saturday, you said. So she works this Saturday, the twenty-eighth, so if you do every other week, she'd be off every other week.
Is that right, do you?
The eighteenth, April eighteenth.
Eighteenth of April is the only one that's, does anybody else have any other conflict days, Saturdays?
Um, March. So March seventh?
March fifteenth, I think it is. Whatever that Saturday is.
That's a March fifteenth?
March fourteenth.
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 March fourteenth you would be working.
Yeah, so.
So March seventh, March twenty-first.
And April.
That's Easter, that's the day before Easter, so he doesn't want to do it that day.
And April eighteenth or fifteenth.
Um, I had, Richard was available March twenty-eighth and April eighteenth to start with. I don't know what else he's got. He might have other ones.
March twenty-eighth, is that doable?
She'll be working, it's a work day.
It's a work day for Michelle.
Do you wanna go along with those other people at the same time, or are we gonna have a special meeting?
What do you mean?
Well, those people with the ideas of the city and stuff.
Richard, Richard?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what we're looking at as a day that we can get all those together.
Okay.
So what's the next date? Now, March twenty-eighth won't work.
We don't wanna do it the, March or April fourth would be the following. That's the day before Easter. The eleventh?
April eleventh.
That would be Michelle's working day.
And then-
The eighteenth is-
Eighteenth is now.
So that worked at the end of April.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're down to the end of April.
I'm good in May.
I'm just gonna kind of throw it out there again.
Uh-huh.
Since you're off on Mondays and you guys do the meetings, personnel meetings on Mondays.
Can we try to play Monday?
How long is the, the-
All day.
It's a, all day, nine to three.
Which means these guys would have to take off work all day.
They have to take off work.
Now she, we're only here for an hour and she leaves.
Oh, you only come in the day, oh, okay.
I'm at work.
Okay.
Yeah.
I mean, I'd be great at it because then we don't have to go outside.
I think that's what we did at last time was-
Everybody-
Something like that.
Yeah. Well, they were all retired.
Except me.
You're allowed to do it on Mondays.
So.
I don't wanna push it all the way out to April.
Yeah, I'm not sure what other dates he has available in March.
Do you wanna look at maybe one of us will have to not be there for it, is what I'm looking at. So we don't push it out too far. Um, I still wanna be able to get specifically you two involved in that process as well. Because one of the things we have to really look at also is redoing the comprehensive plan as we move forward, because that's stale now and we need to look at doing that on a five-year of the capital improvement plan. On a five-year and a ten-year basis to be able to move forward to the capital improvement plan and, and, and the overall comprehensive plan.
We've also in the past, um, asked our consultants if they wanna join us, if they've got any insight. So once we pick a day, we can ask our, we can ask Justin and Joanne too, if they wanna join us.
I am in trouble with that as well.
It's up to them if they have-
We'd be happy to join. We've, we've not charged for that in the past. Look at it as a good visiting session and have some client service, so.
What about April eleventh? Who's not available April eleventh?
Me.
That's her. Okay, have you been to a goal-setting one before?
Mm-hmm, we've done it.
Okay, are you okay with setting that one out?
Yep.
Okay.
Just saying, I mean, well, the last time we did it, it was a nine to three, you know, it was an all-day thing. And do we have a copy of that?
One of us does.
Did we do anything with that?
Yeah, I think that's, the only thing we did was the park, you know?
Yeah, I mean, we spent six hours.
Didn't our current mission come from that?
No, no, nothing came from that really.
I think the only thing that come out of that was the park.
Which was already in the process.
One of the things I think was talked to, if I remember correctly, going off memory, was talked a lot about the, you know, just the continued want and need for commercial development and kind of, there was, you know, but, you know, the, the Preserve of Montrose, that opportunity came up, I mean, at least then you kind of knew what the vision was. You know what? So I think maybe it's hard to get tangible benefits from it, but it's maybe more so overall vision and kind of, as opportunities come up, what's important and what's not important.
Well, and then also it's a, it's a good networking tool because you guys all get together once a month. You know, for now we're at a council meeting and then, you know, everybody goes their separate ways and it's really kind of a good tool too for everybody to know where everybody's thinking or what their thoughts are, especially the new ones.
I put on some proposed new vision, mission and purposes down at the bottom of that as well. You got one?
Yeah, I got one right here, yep.
Um, those are kind of proposals as well for you guys to kick around. I, I did some work on the, on the vision, did some work on the mission and the purpose. To kind of kick that stuff around so we can look at that, see where we're at with those. I didn't throw anything out there as far as the goals. I think I wanna wait for the goal-setting meeting to do that. Um, I think we kind of probably have some common goals. And maybe we wanna go around and hit your hot button if you want to for a little bit. You wanna start, Melissa? Your hot button, do you want me to start?
Um, I can start, that's fine. I guess I just wasn't quite as prepared. So I don't have anything written down. I guess one thing, and it sounds like it's something that's been kind of talked about for these, the last session, was, um, was businesses. But one thing I had mentioned to Joanne specifically, we haven't, we haven't done anything yet, but we will, um, was looking at, um, putting together some kind of, I don't know what the right word for it is, like a co-op grocery store, kind of a situation.
Like what Lon Lake has?
Yeah, so, but it would, something that's open to the public, obviously, so everybody can take advantage of it, but more like if you're a member of the co-op, you get the cheaper price kind of a deal. But, um, but I'm, but overall looking at business, but that was one thing that, um, I mean, we hear time and time again, and in such a small community, we're not going to attract a big grocery store. But doing something like a co-op is something that is definitely feasible. Um, and I have talked with Buffalo and their, um, whatever, their, their local co-op. And they're, um, looking in the future for different drop sites. And Montrose would potentially be a drop site for their, for what they do now. And they're also looking at building an actual store as well. So our models might be different, but even if we can establish a drop site, I think that would still benefit the residents of Montrose because you order online and then there's one night a week or whatever, you come and pick up whatever you ordered. So you don't have to go to Buffalo or whatever, and it's all local, obviously, but, but expanding on that too. So, that was one thing that I have talked to Charlie a little bit.
Lloyd?
Well, I was going, uh, going to builder's agreement so that we can, wouldn't have so much taxes. But that's gonna be a, a long process there. See, the way it is now, you know, a lot of our tax money pays our bills. But we gotta, what's our deficit at right now? Is it like three, four million dollars?
I'm confused what deficit you mean.
Well, they're-
You mean like our debt service?
Yeah, our debt service.
I can't tell you off the top of my head.
Okay, but now, like all the water and sewer and pipes that are in the ground, Sean, does that come out of the water and sewer fund?
Yes, it does.
Yeah. And you see, we got millions of dollars that we're paying for that.
So we're looking kind of a boilerplate builder's agreement.
Well, you see, a lot of other communities, you know, when developers come in, they've, they gotta get the water and the sewer up there at their expense. And they have to hire the city engineer so that it gets done to our specs.
And more an equitable cost sharing, well, not necessarily cost sharing, but that the, the developer pick up the infrastructure costs as well.
Because see, I know we got over a million dollars going past my place down to that preserve down there. Sure, we lowered the interest at maybe four percent, but what are we getting out of that million dollars?
And then, and then I've got, I've got a piece of that too. When it's specific and attributable directly to the development, then that cost should be lifted to them.
And it is. If you read that developer's agreement, it is.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it comes back through the-
Well, yes, but what happened was-
But see, that sack and whack money could go into our reserve for the water and sewer instead of paying for the pipes.
And if the, if the economy went to crash like it did, we wouldn't be paying for the pipes. The developers would be paying for it. What happened was is the, the development-
Folded.
It, yes. So the pipes had to get there in order for the development to be there. The pipes had to get there. And then the economy crashed and everything came to a halt and, and yes, it is laying there in the ground. I mean, he's correct, it is laying there, but, um, the developers would have been paying for it, you know, through their trunk area fees and their connection fees and all that. Had not, everything came to a screeching halt when it did.
But you see, a trunk and wax fees could be going into our water deal and paying for that. Wouldn't have to be paying for the water and sewer pipes.
If the developer paid to lay the water and sewer lines, then you wouldn't have a trunk area fee. The trunk area fee is in lieu of them paying for it upfront.
I don't know, I'd have to check on that. I thought they still charge, so they wouldn't be quite as much, but-
And I know there's quite a few other cities that have debt also for the same reason we do. A number of cities, the majority of the cities.
But there's a lot of them getting away from that now.
Hey, Jill?
Uh, one of my main goals is that I just wanna, I work, I wanna work on community engagement and cohesion. Not only with city council, city employees, but overall city in general. Get each separate development, away from their own separate developments, get everyone together, get, you know, parks and trails, the potential of combining all of them together. Um, obviously, this isn't a short-term plan, it'd be a long-term.
Kind of one of the inspired community and citizen engagement.
Right.
On my list too.
Which in kind of return, we are working on that hopefully in the month of March. We do have the organizations coming. See how it goes.
Yeah.
What, what's the date on that one by the way?
The third.
Next Tuesday.
Tuesday?
Yeah, so hopefully we'll actually up.
Did the Girl Scouts get a specific letter on that? I got, I didn't, okay. A lot of it's haven't gone out yet, or?
They did.
I got it.
They did?
Yeah, they did.
I got one. The Girl Scouts seem to get one.
Yeah, and I didn't get, I didn't get one of the Boy Scouts either. I know.
Are Girl Scouts selling cookies though?
I have them in my truck.
I'll hook up with Anna tomorrow because I thought their list had Teresa and one other person for Girl Scouts.
Didn't get the letter.
No, because I was with Teresa one weekend. She knows nothing.
And the Boy Scouts was you and Brian Gilson.
Okay, yeah, I didn't get it.
No.
Not yet anyway.
Did you get a letter, just the general letter as council member? Or as mayor? Is that how ours came addressed? Mine came to be on Yellow Ribbon. I only got one letter.
I'll double check it.
What are yours?
Council member. Unless it came on Friday.
I did the letter and I passed it on to, um, Anna and Nicole to do the-
I'll pass it on to them on Tuesday.
To do the mailing and I-
And I'll see the Cub Scouts on Wednesday. That's changed too. The Cub Scout leader has changed. I'll make sure he updates that with the city.
So you got one as a council member?
Another letter available.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I'm-
So how did they, if she got one as council member?
I have quite a certain mind game that that's as council member.
Our beloved post office is hoping to be desired, so kind of, you may have gotten my post office box, but look at my post office box and I haven't gotten there yet, so that could be where it's at. Okay, Michelle?
But I got mine like early last week.
Yeah, we did it right away.
I didn't get mine until, I got mine Thursday.
Last Thursday?
Mine's been sent on the back mail.
It was a week's mail. Cause I'm coming tomorrow, so I've got mine two weeks ago.
Yeah, and they mailed them like that. Yeah, and they mailed them like that.
I figured Thursday, Friday, somewhere.
No, they mailed like Tuesday.
Let's take this one offline and get back on the floor.
Anyways.
Okay, Michelle?
Um, I'm pretty much the same as Jill, get in the community, you know, to work together more than what we are.
I've got a couple of them, um, and I've got that one as well, that's kind of falls under foster a family, business-friendly community, where we're looking at community focus, and there's some key issues that fall under there, that's engage residential business and growth, provide high-quality life, quality of life for our residences, residents as well as inspire community and citizen engagement, those three kind of fall under that, that family-friendly and business-friendly community piece. Couple of others I've got is exercise sound fiscal responsibility and provide high-quality city services at a value, and that has several bullets under it. And then recruit, retain, and expand local business, not only to provide local business opportunities, but also to provide jobs within the city of Montrose. So those are kind of some of my hot, hot ones that I've got. So we'll expand on that, and we'll look at April eleventh for our goal setting.
Was that an option for the gentleman?
Um, I know he was open, available March twenty-eighth, and I think he was available April eleventh and April eighteen.
So let's look at April eleventh, I'll give him a call, uh, should be good to go, and then you can follow up in setting that as a date, or we can have, uh, some more goal setting and look at that, develop those, and then, if you would, take a look at those, um, mission statements, the vision statement, and the, um, the purpose statements, and pick those apart, and see if you have anything that should be there that's not there, or if you see anything that is there that shouldn't be there. And, uh, we'll talk about those and, and look at that when we have our goal setting.
Hold on to your journal.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Well, that's curious, I will, let's go home again. Unless you wanna talk about mail tomorrow.
I, I wanna ask Anna, because I only use the list from the, um, volunteer there.
I don't know how one beer, the one guy figured it out, I'll make a, that guy here on Thursday.
Yeah, I don't have to say it. I know both, both groups didn't have anything. Because she sent an email, we were, I think it was Saturday, and she sent an email from the Boy Scouts.
Thank you.
Well, that's really desirable, and I know we did it... Want, want to buy some cookies?
It could be in my, uh, you got the list with me?
Because we, um, I have a show coming on Monday, we filled today, and we did the letter, and they mailed it like next day.
Yeah, I've had mine sitting in the envelope.
Here's the new time sheet, so, um, I have the order. This is which council meetings on the...
Uh, one's...
Really liked it, put that on the box.
Everybody's got electronic copy?
Yeah, anybody that wants one, I'll just put it out on the city email, or your city email on the...
One of these?
Yeah.
I like having the electronic copy and...
I can go out, I can go right now.
Oh.
I'll email you my Word documents, and then you can fill them out, and you can email back to me whenever.
That would be perfect.
Who's the candidate?
We have Tegelons, the Mints, the Samoa, the Dosi Do, I don't know, we have a new one.
The Dosi Do, isn't it the...
That's the true one, the hooky one, there's no more one. Yeah, the short Brent one, and then the new Rawa is...
What's the one again?
Rawa Raisin, it's like a yogurt.
They is the twenty-third.
I got two boxes of Samoa.
Almost over.
I remember hearing about it, but...
I've been really good, I haven't eaten a single Girl Scout cookie, but I've made four donation cookies.
But that's good, that's good.
Here, put that in your bin.
For a little box.
I had two boys, two boys for the weekend, and their sister sells, so of course, when your mom, people are... Guys, some Girl Scouts are being...
I usually give them a five, or a ten, or a twenty, or whatever, they just put that in there, and then you go, feed me any cookies.
I will be coming in late tomorrow morning.
I don't know.
I gotta go have an MRI. I find my doctor's, what's that? Well, I was gonna be late that one morning, because I had a doctor's appointment, they called me Monday, and they changed it.
I ordered, yup, yup.
That was the second time they changed my doctor's appointment on it. So I, um, I ended up going Friday after work, I didn't have this work, but then they, they scheduled my MRI for tomorrow.